They did it over a little bit and they got them out of that.
Nine o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order.
Hold on, give me just a second here.
Just a second here.
Yeah, get livestream going.
Okay. Okay, we're open with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. You've got a couple of new commissioner elects out there. Getting used to this room, you'll be here. Quite a bit, so you'll be spending a lot of time here next few years, welcome. And, Monty, could you please read the roll?
Of course. Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Byerling.
Here.
Commissioner Berkeley.
Here.
Commissioner Peschel.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
The next item we have is to approve or amend the agenda. We have any additions or, I think we have a couple of additions.
Yes, sir. First off, I'd like to remove the closed session. Again, we're simply not prepared to discuss those issues today. Secondly, as a third item under county administrator, if we could please add county board members of Human Services Deputy Director Selection Committee. Again, that would be the third item under county administrator. And also just to note is you have a new listing from Amanda for the CARES business grants. So those would be our changes, Mr. Chair.
Motion to accept the agenda with the changes, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the agenda with the changes. Any further discussion? None, I'll call question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion's carried. Anybody under open forum back there? Or anybody online? Nope, okay. Very good. Next thing we have is consent agenda. Item number one, approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2020. Item two, approve revised Central Minnesota Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Agreement. Item three, approve a 2.5% general wage increase for non-union employees effective January 1, 2021. Item four, abolish a county attorney legal secretary position and authorize a full-time paralegal position. Item five, create a grade four office support position for corrections. Any board members want any of these items pulled for further discussion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion's carried. First up, we have Monty Headley, County Administrator. Going to consider a resolution in support.
Mr. Chair, Julie from the City of Rice is here to address the issue.
Okay, very good.
Hello, gentlemen, I'm here again.
You can actually go up to the mic up here. Very good.
I'm here again to ask for your sponsorship for our Fox Meadows Trail. I'll be applying for a grant. It's the same grant that I applied for last year but did not get. So it's through the Transportation Alternative Projects. And it would be a trail coming from an existing park to connect. It would help with Safe Route to School activities for kids and tie really that Fox Meadows addition into the whole City of Rice.
Okay, any questions from any members? Ed, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment is that that runs, you know, parallel. Fox Meadows is on the other side of Highway 10. And that County Road 2 now going into Rice, that's become, you know, really busy. I mean, it's, you know, you get there at 4:00 to 5:30 or 3:30 to 5:30. I mean, you've got a heck of a time coming out of the hardware store because so many people are coming off the highway. So I think this is something that they need pretty bad there.
It's just so fuzzy.
Well, it's just to adopt the resolution approving the sponsorship of this, so.
And also move for that adoption.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution for support of the City of Rice Transportation Alternative Grants Application. Any discussion? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Next item, we have a supplemental allocation of CARES funding.
And Amanda's with us remotely.
Oh, good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Chair, members of the county commissioners. I have a total of 12 grant applications for your consideration this morning totaling $126,300. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on those grants. We will have a final approval on the 24th. We have a few remaining grants. We're waiting for information back from the applicants, but we should have the remaining of those ready to approve on the 24th.
Okay. I think we have a special meeting to hold for that. Okay, any questions anyone has on that? Anyone? Amanda, the only question I had again is, can you explain the grant amount to percent of loss in sales? What was the, I forget what the relevance of that was to the calculation?
Yep. Certainly, Chair. So the grant amount to, the percent of amount that they're requesting, dividing that into the loss in revenue or loss in sales over that comparison period. And that produces the percent.
Yep, that's it, yep.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining from this vote because I'm affiliated with a couple of businesses on this.
Okay, very well, thank you for that. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Amanda, how are we doing on the money? Are we gonna run short? Are we gonna be long?
No, so I'll just kind of recap. To date, we have expended, from round one to round three, we've expended $688,677. Includes this third round where I'm requesting that the commission approve $126,300. With the addition of round four next week, we will look to expend an additional $116,879 for a total between all four rounds of $805,556. If you remember, or if you recall, we were, the board approved an additional $200,000 earlier in October. And that means that we will, we may have approximately $71,444 left over. And that is because we had a couple applicants apply. And after further investigation of their documentation, we found them not to qualify. So we will have about $71,000 left over.
All right. That'll work.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Heinon.
Monty, where's that $71,000 gonna go? Is it gonna go back to us, come back to us then for us to spend appropriately again?
It definitely could. Obviously, it's still sitting in the county account until it's distributed to businesses. So it could be reallocated to other purposes. Of course, you've got a pretty large pool of nonprofit applications there and so on.
Mr. Chair.
Chair, do we have any new applicants coming in since we previously closed the application process?
We have received two more inquiries for funding, although, again, the application period has closed. So we are no longer accepting any new applications.
Mr. Chair. May I motion to close that? Jake?
I mean, as good. Last Tuesday night, I got a text during, you know, the Watab Township. They're returning $72,000 some odd dollars to the county too. So I'll have, that is extra money to go with, and I haven't heard from anybody else.
So far, I've heard of about $110,000 coming back from townships. Yeah, 70. Yeah. And then, he said, I've heard 20 from St. George. And I can't recall the other amount. It's around $110,000 is roughly. I'll have the best number I can for you on Friday.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Amanda, the two last applications you received, would they qualify? Do you think?
One of them, after further investigation, they did not qualify. So the one did, the other one did not. And so that, in the drop, the total amount that we were anticipating extending the program. So we're trying our best to extend all the money that we were received. And, you know, it really is up to the applicants on whether or not they are submitting the correct documentation. And we've been following up and constantly following up with them. So we've been working really hard with each of the applicants, trying to make sure that they are submitting the documentation that we need.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What amount does that one applicant qualify for?
The one applicant that came in late?
Yes. You said he had $15,000. $15,000.
Win.
All right. Any other questions from anyone? We better get this money out in the community, so. We need a motion.
I guess I'd be willing to.
Did we made a motion last?
To close the application. Can we accept it at a later date? The one applicant.
Extend that date?
Well, I don't know if we extend the date, but maybe the one applicant that somebody.
In other words, you would like to make the motion to approve the ones listed here.
Plus the ones that you got there.
But keep the process open yet for a period of time? Would that be the correct way to do it?
I don't know. That would have to be up to Amanda because I think she's gonna run into a time crunch here.
Okay.
You know, but she's evidently got these two done.
Well, we have to, if we're gonna pass it, we have to have the name and all that stuff here too.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
But that would be coming up on our next board meeting.
Yeah, I think so. Because we do have some, we do have the special board meeting coming up. I think we can handle it there.
24th, you got.
Yeah, so why don't we just approve the list here as.
Okay.
Motion to approve the list we have, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, any further discussion? None, I'll call that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Send the checks out. Very good.
Mr. Chair, yes, I had one more item. About three months ago, the board appointed a couple of its members to be on a Human Services Deputy Director Recruitment Selection Committee. For better or worse, that recruitment's gonna stretch into next year. So we wanted to confirm who would be your appointees be for that selection committee. Most likely, again, it won't get wrapped up until into next year.
But the process would start this year, Ian?
Probably will get started in terms of some initial screening. But I don't expect finalist interviews will happen until next year, till January.
Was that something then that can wait till next year to appoint? If you're gonna have the screenings and when you get down to the final, or are the committee gonna be part of the screening process also?
Well, I think ideally, your committee should be involved from the start.
Okay.
It'd be tough to sort of start and then drop out and then someone new come in, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, there's only two commissioners that are gonna be on both years, so I nominate Commissioner Heinon and Commissioner Pop to be on this committee.
Okay.
By default, I take that, right?
Okay, I guess, all right. If that's in the form of a motion, then I would accept that. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried and.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Had some more work for you.
Yeah, so. Another few more meetings, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
All right. I see, I think we have another commissioner elect. Beth, is that you back there? I think so, yeah. Well, welcome. I welcomed the other two gentlemen before, so you walked in a little late. But like I told them, you get used to this room, you'll be in here a lot in the next few years, so. Welcome, again, welcome. Okay, next up, we have Nadine Inman, County Attorney Treasurer with an election update.
Real quick. See if we can just put this out here and inside the land.
Good morning, Nadine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just gonna share the summary report with you of how Beckton County voters voted for the various races during the election. Just information that you might find interesting in your spare moments of reading. All right, Monty, did you have any question in one of those at all?
Thank you.
Yeah, so just wanted to give you, gentlemen, just an overall of what that general election looked like for us. Don't wanna do three elections in one year again, if we can avoid that. It was a really, really big election. So Benton County has approximately 24,000, just over 24,000 registered voters. Of that 24,000, we ended up with just over 90% of the Benton County voters voted. In 2016, which was another big turnout year for us, we had just over 90% as well. So we had a really high turnout of voters that showed up for this election. Of that, in addition to that, we also ended up with 2,200 new registered voters in the county. That doesn't mean just moved into the city. That would be new people moving into the city and it would be people that were in inactive status. If you don't vote for four years, then you're put into an inactive status. And those voters had to re-register to be active to be able to vote. So of that 2,200, some of it was inactive voters and some of that was new voters. So that's quite a large number as well. And just to hit a little bit more on that, the absentee voters. So as you know, we had a really high turnout of absentee voters due to COVID. We sent out 8,825 absentee packets from our office. That's the number of requests we had for people that wanted to vote absentee. Of that 8,000, we had 700, or I'm sorry, 7,834 returned to us. So that was the number that my office had to process. So approximately 31% of the registered voters in the county voted absentee this go-around. Huge, huge numbers. And just to share a little bit more on the equipment, and thank you again for allowing us to purchase that equipment. That was a lifesaver. We were doing a little comparison on the DS 200 tabulator box, which you see at a lot of the precincts when you go to vote. The machine that you walk up to and you slide your ballot in. So if we had not had that new DS 450, we were trying to calculate the number of hours it would have taken the office to get all those absentee ballots processed. So that DS 200 takes about 11 ballots per minute. So we can process about 11 ballots per minute in the ones that you're seeing at the precincts. That new machine that we got, we can process 75 ballots per minute. So that's quite a huge change. That machine was, again, a lifesaver. And we do thank you so much for allowing us to purchase that. That will serve us wisely in the future as well. So, and in case you're curious, with that, oh, with that consent decree that was passed earlier during the election, we had to honor any ballots that were postmarked November 3rd or before up until November 10th. So we did get some absentee ballots in. We had a total of 12 ballots that were received in during that timeframe from November 4th to November 10th that we did process ballot board and accept and uploaded those results to the Secretary of State's office. So if you're curious about that. One other thing. If you're curious at all about Langola, so of course, Langola is a mail ballot precinct. We did have a lot of voters that were coming into the county as we are their precinct location here at the county. We had a lot of their voters coming in this Saturday before the election and the days following up to the election voting. That comments were made that they were asking why they didn't have a polling place. Why did they have to come here? Not happy that Langola was a mail ballot precinct. And we did encourage those voters to talk to Langola clerk, to contact the Langola clerk and express their concerns. And we have talked to the Langola clerk yesterday. And she did receive several phone calls. And they are surveying their township right now and doing some consideration on switching Langola back to a polling place. So that may be changing because the voters were unhappy with the fact that they didn't have a polling place. So just share that. So we have about 697 registered voters in Langola alone. Of that, we accepted 672 of those ballots at our office. We also had to spoil 144 ballots. So what would, what happened, what we saw happening at our office was the Langola voters were coming in to vote where their polling place, they wanna vote, they had to come in to vote here. Although they had previously been mailed ballots in the mail automatically, a lot of them chose not to vote by that mail packet. They didn't bring it with them, they just left it at home. And so when they come into the office, we have to spoil that whole package that's already been mailed to them and that ballot and reissue them a brand-new ballot. So a lot of additional time on my staff's side to do that process. So hopefully, you know, they'll consider going back to having their own polling place. So we'll see in the future what that holds. And then lastly, I have, just as you have may heard, we have a possible recount on the radar for Senate District 14. So we've been contacted by an attorney about a possible recount and what that looks like for our county. We have already provided them with an estimation of what it would cost to do a recount. In Benton County, the difference in the two candidates, the two top voted candidates there, it was about 300, just over 316 ballot difference. So now we just have to wait. They have up until Friday, this Friday, to decide and notify us if they want us to proceed forward with the recount. So just to make you aware of that. Anybody have any questions for me?
Steve, good question.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I know we paid a high price for all this equipment, but Ms. Dana Furman from Sauk Rapids generally appreciate it and thanks the county for everything we did for them.
Yeah, they're very good partners to work with. So we do appreciate all their efforts up there in Sauk Rapids as well. As a reminder, we do have our post-election tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. for Commissioner Peschel and Commissioner Pop. I will make sure I bring treats for you volunteering to do that. So, yeah, that could take up to a couple hours, just so your gentlemen are aware, the precincts that were selected were really high precincts. So we have about 2,500 ballots that we're gonna have to manually count tomorrow. So that'll take a little bit of time. So whoever drew those precincts.
Warning.
Who was it? Mr. Peschel?
So anyways, that was just the recap of where we ended up with the elections. Otherwise, it was very smooth. It was very flawless on our part. I really want to thank my staff for all their hard work. I didn't have the opportunity to calculate the hours, the number of hours that we worked in the last couple weeks following up to the election. Something I still wanna look at so we can get a ballpark idea of how many man-hours it takes when you're looking at 8,000 mail absentee requests. So for future record, it would be nice for us to know.
Mr. Chair.
I just had a question for you, Nadine. In one of the commissioner districts, it was several hundred less voters in that district. Is that indicative of population shift or voter participation rate? Or with 90%, you wouldn't think that was the difference. I can just see something coming out in the redistricting on that.
Yeah, that's really hard to predict, so we'll have to see what happens with that.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have a, redistrictable was by district, okay. I didn't think, I didn't think you would.
Yeah.
You brought up an interesting point yesterday at a general government committee meeting. They brought up that, when people vote in a primary and ask for a mail-in ballot, they actually signed up also for the general election. Yeah, and they got all mixed up on that, so, yeah.
We did have a lot of that as well.
Yeah, right. So that was statewide, so that was brought up at general government yesterday. So if they can ever, gonna try and clean that up a little bit. And also that they don't expect any changes in the election process this year. None of it, none ever really taken place in the last several years in the Senate, so.
Yeah.
Don't expect any this year. That's what I heard yesterday. That's what I heard yesterday, so.
I got one comment, Mr., that we did some of the numbers and actually, Langola's vote was like ninety-four point six percent versus ninety percent from the county. So it didn't hinder the turnout at all that they voted.
It did not. No. Because the Saturday that we were open before the election, October thirty-first, I would say we saw a majority of Langola voters that Saturday. We were required to be open from ten to three and it was non-stop down the sidewalk around the block that day. So a majority of them showed up on that day.
And there was, I had a call, somebody, they actually, a few went to Rice to vote.
Yes, yep.
You know, they got a letter, they got a postcard, and they got their ballot and they still showed up at the.
Yeah, very, they get very frustrated when they get sent from one area to.
Yeah, and what I mean, you ain't opening your mail evidently.
Yeah, yeah. And we had, you know, there were newer voters too that maybe were new to the area and weren't aware of that. And so, you know, they might not have lived there at the time that they originally made the decision to go to mail ballots, so they were out of the loop. So that communication needs to be done a little better in the future as well. So, yeah, that's all I have for you.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Next up, Vicki, has something? Okay, next up, we have Roxanne with a minor final plat titled A and G Edition. Is there something? I, for some reason, I did not see that in my packet, but I don't know who Paige got it.
You must have the paper packet.
Yeah, I knew it was an electronic one. But so go ahead, yeah, I'll follow along.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Do you want me to throw this up on, on the computer?
If you could, yeah, that'd be fine, yeah, thank you.
Okay, might take me a minute here.
It's all right, we got IT in the audience.
It wasn't in my packet. Vicki's gone. Well, I might have gotten this place too, I don't know, I thought I, I don't remember seeing it though.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember that, yeah.
Monty, do you want me to share the screen or just leave it?
Hi.
Okay, all right. So we have a minor subdivision in Mahew Lake Township. This is a two-lot plat just off of Little Rock Road Northeast. The applicant is Andrew Welsh. With these two properties, they are alternative septic sites, meaning that we, we put a deed restriction on them just to notify any future property owners that these are alternative septics, they're not going to function or be maintained like your general septic, they're going to take more maintenance and closer eye on them as you have them and use them. The two lots, the original proposed access was, as you see, option one here. That has, after discussions with the highway department, option two is what the property owner and the highway department have agreed upon. There is an existing entrance where this one to the west is located, so that'll be a shared entrance with lot one here and the property that's directly to the west. And then the existing entrance will be removed to Mr. Welsh's property here and it will be shared with lot two. The township did not want to see access off of Ninety-Ninth Street Northeast here. It only goes to the end of these platted lots and they have no desire to extend that township road. So it is a private driveway and there will not be access. I, I suppose they could put in some access if they work with the property owner, but the legal access will be off of County Road thirteen. And so generally, I would have placed this on the consent agenda, but we didn't have the driveways worked out at the time, so I just wanted to bring that forward, that option two is what will be proposed for these lots. And the planning commission did discuss and recommend approval of this subdivision.
Okay. Warren, do you got any comment?
No, everything was, the applicant agreed with all the options, so I would move that way.
Application, Mr. Chair.
For option?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Two.
Option two, right. Okay, and you have the second, but any further discussion? No, no call, question, all is favor signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motions carried. Anything else for us, Roxanne?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we recessed the regular contract board, we need to conduct the Human Services Board being turned over to Commissioner Pechal.
Okay, I would like to call the Human Services Board to order. Approve the agenda, we got anything else on the agenda, Mr.?
No.
Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? None, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda to approve the irregular minutes of November third, number two, to approve the contract with DSS to provide mental health screening to eligible children, youth, and child welfare and juvenile justice systems. And number three, approve a contract renewal for independent lifestyles to provide consumer support grant program service on behalf of Benton County Human Services. And number four, to approve the two twenty-twenty-one ACS support agreement. Anybody want to talk about any of these? If not, need a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair, second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Bob?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First thing I have here is to recommend approval for a contract with the Department of Human Services regarding the operation of live scans, scan systems for childcare background checks. Basically, we are tasked with doing background checks, fingerprints with all of our licensed facilities that do childcare. And the way it's set up is DHS is going to pay us about three dollars and twenty-five cents per every person we do. They have in from January first through January thirti, or June thirtieth to get this done. So basically, we're looking at probably about five hundred people that are going to need to do this. So basically, what I'm asking is if you would approve the contract for this.
Anybody got any questions?
I don't, I don't see any wrong with this. I'd move approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? None, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Okay, and the last thing is Nicole's going to do an update with COVID, so I think you could probably catch her on the screen, I hope. Turn on your microphone.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Clip reading.
Any ideas?
No, we had Amanda on earlier and she was working just fine.
Can she call?
She can call this phone number, that's true. One thing she could possibly do is just turn her mic off and turn it back on.
She did that already, yeah.
She did that. Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, it's probably something going on with her computer.
IT left, guy left already.
Yeah, he left.
Maybe if you could try calling real quick and we'll see what, if that works.
She could call five, fifty, she could call fifty-sixty.
Did you catch that, fifty-sixty?
Otherwise, plug your headphones in.
Or call Monty's cell phone.
That's right, this is the last resort.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm not quite sure about the technical difficulty here, but we have a good alternative, I guess. I was just going to give an update on our current COVID status and please chat me if you have questions or would like other information, but overall, our dashboard is the most up-to-date information about COVID here in our county. And we do typically have that updated daily by about nine, although today it is not updated, so that will be coming later today. We have over two thousand cases here. I think what most concerning is, is about four hundred and thirty-three are active cases and so those are folks who are currently in isolation. That only includes those who are testing positive and we consider those that are close contacts of those, four hundred and thirty-three. Even if they have one close contact, we're looking at a lot of people who are expected to quarantine for fourteen days. To put a little perspective on it, in October, we had five hundred and fifty-four cases total and so far in November, we've had over a thousand. So we have really seen the cases rise here in November. And looking at, thinking about the number of cases for November, so we're looking at well over a thousand. So far, two hundred and sixty-some have been interviewed. We've lost three hundred and some to follow-up. We've had thirteen that refused and we're still attempting to contact over four hundred of those people. So there's certainly a backlog. We had a backlog earlier in the outbreak as well and we continue to have that issue now today again. For November, if you think about the age group of zero to seventeen, that's been certainly a conversation in our school district. We've had over a hundred just in that age group, so about a hundred and thirty-seven. And in total, since March, we've had about two hundred and sixty, so certainly a significant number of those youth here in November. I did also check like the number of cases per thousand residents here in Benton County and we're at fifty-two. We made the top fifteen in the state, we are number fifteen, so there's fourteen ahead of us that have a higher rate per thousand, but only two in our central Minnesota region, which is Todd and Stearns County. Any questions about cases?
Nicole, what, what's, what's the big uptick? What's, what's happening?
Well, we expected some of the uptick to happen when schools went back in session, so certainly thinking about the number of people who had not been in close contact for a while in regards to our school system, so teachers, paras, bus drivers, students, parents, athletics. We expected to see some of this and we also expected that colleges resumed and our younger folks moved onto campus, that we would see this happening. Again, I think there's lots of factors that have contributed. COVID fatigue is probably a significant one. When I look around our county and stop at maybe some of our local establishments, there's varying consistency in following some of the recommendations around masking and/or social distancing or just capacity. And so I think those things are all contributing to the growth we've seen in the last two months.
Mr. Chair, how about age demographics? So is it, is the uptick in the younger people or is it uptick across the board?
Our highest group is the eighteen to thirty-four group and we currently have a little over six hundred and fifty in that age group. The thirty-five to forty-nine, seven hundred, or four hundred and seventy-eight, the fifty to sixty-four, four hundred and thirty-five. So the zero to seventeen is our smallest group overall, but just the significant grows in the last month is what's concerning for us. We're, we're certainly seeing it spread along our U. I'll move on to testing then. There are lots of testing options here in central Minnesota, so the healthcare system continues to kind of refine and expand their testing as well as some of the options for it. So online signup, the drive-through options have really been helpful. Walgreens, CVS, and Colored are also offering testing, so there really are a lot of options available here. The saliva testing site that opened in St. Cloud about three weeks ago has been busy. They've done over twelve hundred tests in the first three weeks. A little bit disturbing is that the positivity rate, so the number of positive tests just from that site, has been between twenty and twenty-eight percent. And that twenty-eight percent last week was the highest in the state that they had seen at any other saliva testing site. Let's see here, last week, there was over twelve hundred positive tests just there. So I think we're hearing a lot about the positivity rate and overall from Minnesota, when you look at the cumulative, they're about six point three percent. And for Benton here, cumulative, we're about seven point six. We're, we're ahead of the state average for the cumulative. When we look at our fourteen-day average or our seven-day average, so just in the last week or so, the state average was about thirteen percent and Benton, we're about fourteen percent. And that's actually a couple of weeks old, so week forty-four, that's the end of October. So we haven't actually even tabulated our positivity rate yet for November. And just a little bit of guidance around testing. Basically, if you have any symptoms, you should get tested. Just assume that it's COVID. A sniffle, a sore throat, a fever, any of those symptoms listed on the, you know, common or less common symptoms, you should get tested. We've also seen a big increase in those who are asymptomatic. Not as many here when I run my reports, but again, we have four hundred and some cases that haven't been interviewed, so I don't know what their information holds, but about ten percent were asymptomatic and the rest had some sort of symptom. Testing also is available on our college campus sites and so we do have a lot of young residents here at Benton that do go to St. Cloud State, St. Ben, St. John's. And just know that they've been doing large testing events now as they are spending students back home for the holiday break and they're really encouraging them to stay within their families and to quarantine basically for fourteen days, so they're not taking it back home to their communities. And there is another new testing option that got released late last week, is the Black Home testing option for saliva test, completely free. You can go online and order those for your household and then they will talk you through what that looks like as far as providing the sample and mailing it in. For most of those, you're able to get your results within about forty-eight hours, so we've really expanded what options are available here in Minnesota. Questions about testing at all?
Mr. Chair, what testing method gets the quickest results back to the person?
So an antigen test will be the quickest results and those are about fifteen minutes. And for our local area, Sartell Pediatrics has been offering that. It had not been an approved testing method up until October first and now we do consider those tests probable, so they're a little bit different than the saliva ones or the ones that are swabbing the nasal cavity. Those are PCR, but they're fairly reliable, but they have a higher risk of false negative and false positive. So a lot of times if a person is symptomatic and they have an antigen test and it comes back negative, they would refer them over to get one of the more confirmed tests, so the swab or the saliva.
Okay, thank you.
Just to touch base on hospitalizations, in October, we had thirty-four hospitalizations and in November, so far, we've had thirty-three, so we are, and I believe we've surpassed that already, there's a few more noted in our system today. Just to note that many of those in the hospital are not from long-term care facilities. Our long-term care facilities have been able to provide the care that those folks need in the long-term care setting. So those folks are often from their own private residence and the look this week is certainly a younger group than I'd like to, to see in there, so those in their fifties and sixties. So certainly seeing some more hospitalizations in kind of that younger age group. And overall, I think most of them are doing well and able to be discharged back home or to a step-down facility, but just to know that they're, they're not really our long-term care folks that are filling up hospitals.
Mr. Chair.
And so far in November, we've had ten deaths and there were thirteen total in October.
Nicole, Nicole, how about the antibody test? Are they available in place to see who, see who is?
I actually got one this last week. So depending on your provider, they will offer the antibody test. It took about, I think, three days to get the results back, but yes, I know the central care system does offer antibody tests.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on hospitalizations? And I'll move on just to a quick vaccine update. Again, we're continuing to work with the Department of Health to plan for what, I guess, phase one of vaccine distribution and administration looks like. And we know that those are going to go to our healthcare workers who are on the front line and other emergency essential personnel. We did hear that. We did hear that today that Coburn's will be offering the Covid vaccine through their pharmacies. And so we're pleased to know that that will be an option here available for our central Minnesota region. Again, we don't know a lot of details about what this looks like. There's certainly federal guidance on it, and then our state will also have recommendations on how we roll this out. And we do have draft plans that are ready. But again, they're pretty vague and more details to come once we know what the outlook. Any questions on vaccines? And then I'll just talk a little bit about community impact that we're seeing. So we do get updates from our healthcare system about twice a week on capacity and staffing. And, and certainly, I think if you follow Dr. Morris on Facebook or any of the other platforms that he's been doing some messaging on, Central Care is well poised to continue to take on the cases of Covid here in central Minnesota, although they are working on surge plans. So we know that folks that are there for elective surgery or other different types of critical care not related to Covid may be placed to a different section of the hospital or maybe at a partner facility throughout the region. And we would expect that to continue as the cases and need for hospitalization continues. One factor that has been brought to light that we hadn't overly considered was that when the school models change, so if schools go to more distant learning platforms, the need for childcare changes, and that has really affected many of the central care health work staff. And so we've been trying to coordinate some of those efforts between our school districts, who are required to, to provide childcare to essential workers, and what's going on in our central care system, so that we are trying to be able to meet that need for those that need childcare assistance. Long-term care, last week, we had seven facilities listed on our weekly report that have had cases in their agencies. I think the week before, we had four, so we added three. Those facilities stay on there for twenty-eight days until they go without a new case. And we know that long-term care facilities are testing weekly and/or twice a week, depending on what their positivity has been for staff and residents. So we, we will expect to see that number to continue to grow. And, and even prior to Covid staffing at long-term care facilities and assisted living has been an issue. So again, that is an issue. They are working with the regional healthcare coalitions and the Department of Health to make sure they have resources available should they become short-staffed and aren't able to provide the care that they need. What I saw recently, which again doesn't have today's numbers in there, where there have been ninety-nine total cases of resident cases in our long-term care or assisted living facilities. For healthcare workers, it's hard to delineate that because many of the healthcare workers don't live in Benton County that work in our Benton County facilities. They live in Stearns or Sherburne or Morrison. And so we know the Benton County work, healthcare workers, but we don't know any beyond that. So it's, it's kind of hard to talk about that number because of the confusion. I guess too, I will mention, there was a letter last week from Commissioner Milcom to all of the Benton County local, local elected officials. And I do believe most counties got this letter. There are very few that haven't had the positivity rate less than five percent. So most counties in Minnesota got this. I mean, it really talked about the issues with the community spread and how that's affecting the long-term care facilities. And then there was an ask on the back that really just talked about, here's what we can do to decrease community spread. So, you know, certainly masking, restricting gatherings, really working with our business partners so that they are following the interventions as best they can. Messaging and being good role models, I think, is something that's important to consider. And really thinking about those that are most at risk and trying to keep them safe for those that do have to interact with them, that they, you know, certainly do the precautions that are recommended. Any questions about healthcare or long-term care?
Mr. Chair, Nicole, there's a lot of things going around about people getting it the second time. Is there any truth to that?
I've heard of a few isolated cases, but I do not have solid data here in Minnesota that they've gotten it again. I will say, a lot of people thought maybe that they had it in early spring. And when they had the antibody testing, they were disappointed that they hadn't. Mine came back negative, and I thought perhaps I had been a case back in the March, April, May timeframe, but I did not have antibodies. And so I think the assumption that maybe it's a second round of it might not be true.
Thank you.
One other thing to mention, Good Shepherd and Country Manor both have a Covid section to their website. So if you want to know where their current restrictions are or some of the information around cases in different sectors of their buildings, you know, they have a lot of different apartments or assisted livings. Their websites are pretty good places to find that information. So the Guardians here in Foley does not have that, but you know, Country Manor and Good Shepherd both. Our schools have certainly gone through some changes in the last month. Sacra Rapid School District is all distance learning right now. And a lot of that stemmed from not having staff available to teach in person. And so I know they, I believe they have a meeting this Thursday where they are going to decide how long in that distance learning model. They have really worked to heat their K through five section in a hybrid model. But again, that has become more difficult in the last month. Foley School District as well, high school students are in a distance learning model, and they are evaluating this week, Thursday, if they move their K through five to a hybrid model as well. When they do this, they are required to do that childcare piece. And so there still are youth in the school districts or in some of their partner agencies, like the Boys and Girls Club. So there's certainly students still together, but it's less of a number, and they have to weigh that risk about safety and the ability to teach remotely. And we were also informed, I believe, late yesterday that the St. Cloud area Catholic schools are also going distance learning. And they're going to stretch that out till after the holidays. Just thinking about the safety of students getting together for family gatherings and then bringing it back into the school setting. For local businesses, if there are three cases in a local business, we get notified that that is a cluster. And local public health has been trying to follow up with those local businesses to say, you know, do you have a Covid plan? How well are you implementing the plan? What kind of barriers are you facing? And then we're just trying to troubleshoot with them ways that they can continue to keep their staff safe, as well as keep their doors open, because we do know that some local businesses have had to shut down for a period of time to do some in-depth cleaning and/or just too many have been exposed and they need to quarantine. So we continue to do that. And then there was the new executive order last week that we had some changes to our local bars and restaurants, so a closing time of 10:00 PM for indoor dining, as well as people not being able to sit in the bar area. It doesn't affect drive-up or delivery or walk-up, but it's certainly a change for those local establishments. Social gatherings also had some new restrictions placed on that. A maximum of ten people and not more than three different family groups. Celebrations and receptions, maximum of fifty people, not past 10:00 PM. And after January eleventh, that goes down to five. Indoor spaces, a fifty percent cap and not more than a hundred and fifty. Outdoor spaces, not more than a hundred and fifty, and they must be six feet distance between parties. Questions about that, local businesses, the new executive order? There was also a new texting program that was launched yesterday. And basically, it's for those that test positive for Covid. They'll receive a text that says, please answer the call when we call you so we can follow up on your case and complete an interview. And the last item I had was just to follow up on local public health infrastructure and our Cares funding. So we continue to report our staff time related to Covid so we can reimburse with that Cares funding. We have made some purchases. A trailer was purchased for supplies and some other mass dispensing items. Since we submitted that request, a few things have changed. We haven't needed some equipment, and we maybe need it to shift the money to other things. So we continue to look at that and reevaluate using up those funds. The ELC also, I believe, is waiting on a quote for some changes just with the electrical outlets, just to make that a little more user-friendly, should that have to be used again in the future. I think that's it for the updates. Are there any other questions?
Any questions? Very good, Nicole.
Very thorough.
Yeah, there's a lot.
There's a lot. All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thing, Bob?
No, I do not have anything else.
Okay, I will adjourn and turn it back to the chair.
Okay, we'll reconvene in regular board meeting, and we have Commissioner meeting updates. Any meetings we attended, who, anybody want to start?
I'll start, Mr. Chair. We had plenty of commissioners on the night. We had, it was, it was quite a few on the agenda, but it, it went fairly well. The one we had today was at Welsh, the other one, we had Nate Landwehr. He had some erosion control along the river, up by the cove. Do some rip wrapping there. They had to get permission to do that from the county and from the DNR. And then we had Mark and Verizon Wireless, Verizon Wireless, on behalf of Mark and Sandy Brenney, they're going to put a Verizon tower over there on Midtownship, close to Brenney Cabinets. Fairly tall, two hundred and fifty-nine feet, and I think, and it's going to be fenced with a bobb wire on top, so nobody can get to the tower. They got to get permission from the airport because they're so, they're within so many miles of the airport. So with, with, with all them conditions. And then we had Richard and, Richard Murray there, Knife River, Reno. I think we just had to extend their permit. They want, they had an additional seven and a half acres. They want to mine out there, so we, we just extended their, their permit. And then we had Richard Anderson up, I think along number ten there. They want to turn it to floodproofing. And we had him on the phone and I, just for asking him about the flood plain. You know, he lives right, right next to number ten. And when I asked him if they ever got flooded up there, and I probably shouldn't have said that because Roxanne didn't like that very well. But anyway, he said, number ten, the highway would get flooded before he would get flooded on his, where he's putting his building. The highway would get flooded before he would. But anyway, and then the other one is, for Dean Sepal, he requested a condition use construct, storage in agriculture. And I think that one too was just to extend his permit. And that was in East Langola, on Harrison Estates up there. Besides that, that was it. It took us about an hour and a half. We were, we did, we did good. That's all, Mr. Chair. Oh, we had, me and Ed had election candidates and my friend, Nadine gave us a report. And everything was pretty.
Pretty good.
Pretty good, yeah, everything called correct. And I wasn't the only one to draw the stock grab. Who was the other person?
The lady from the attorney's office.
Yeah.
Court administrator.
She drew one too, so we got two of the biggest precincts. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Anybody volunteer next?
I'll go next.
Okay.
So last week, we had the insurance collaborative virtual meeting and got a report about a lot of counties have, who have had, been no increases for several years but are increasing now. And one stat that kind of blew me away was the stop-loss claims are three times higher than the stop-loss premiums are. So everybody's be looking at increases going forward and using up some of the reserves. And they, they haven't had any transplants last previous years. Now they should, they have three transplants out there. And they also offer a transplant insurance now, something to maybe think about because the premiums you pay for your transplant insurance, your regular reinsurance premium goes down proportionally. So it sounds like a kind of a no-cost thing. So we might want to look into that transplant insurance. And it said after, because of after Covid, there's going to be a lot more lingering issues going down the road in the future. So, so be prepared for higher healthcare costs going forward. Hate to be a bearer of good news here, but.
On the transplant insurance, is that prorated between the county and the person that takes it? Or is it offered by the county?
The county would buy this transplant insurance for all of its employees as an aggregate.
Okay.
And then, but your reinsurance cost should come down proportionally. So it's something you might want to look into is transplant insurance.
Have, have they included any other counties in their collaborative?
There was one that was applying, but they had, their loss ratio was too high right now. And they're going to wait a year to get it back down. I don't remember the name of the county, but.
Okay.
But they are starting, trying to grow the business, you know, grow the collaborative to get more buying power. But, but they want to have counties that have a pretty good track record to come on in. But everybody, you know, there still believes it was the right thing to do, along with the collaborative and self-insuring. And as mentioned earlier, we're going to raise our self-insurance from sixty thousand, seventy thousand.
That was one of the things that impressed me when you talked to the commissioners down there was that they were really selective on which counties they were going to let in.
Right.
You know, and as we know, you know, commissioners change and people on that board change. But just knowing the area and knowing some of the longtime commissioners from down there, I thought that was one of the reasons why I thought it was a good deal.
I personally think it's a good idea we've got involved in that, and I think. Daniel.
Yeah, I do too.
That's all I have.
Well, me and Warren had the extension committee last Monday night.
Oh, that's right.
Everything's running pretty smooth there. I mean, we did our performance evaluations, and I think this was the easiest one we've ever done.
Yeah.
I mean, it was pretty much, everybody exceeds expectations.
Especially when you don't see them.
Yeah, you don't see them, and, and you know, everybody, I mean, everything seems to be running good. One of the things that I took away was that in all this time, Benton County added a new four-age club. And everything that was going on, she was managed to increase membership and add a new club. This is like, that's really kind of unheard of, that, you know. So I mean, she's got a lot of enthusiasm down there. There's no doubt about, about that, but everybody was really good. And that was about all we really had for business. We do have some, some appointees that have to be made. We're looking at a little bit of maybe juggling some people around.
She's pulling her hair on that one a little bit.
Yeah, we're kind of working to see where we can go, you know. Commissioner Bowery's got an appointment that actually lives in my district. And, you know, so we're kind of looking at some of that stuff that we're going to have to figure out. And then, of course, Commissioner Pascal's leaving us, so, but we'll get through it. We got a good, good regional director, good people working on it. And then yesterday, I had the environment and natural resource deal. And one thing that we got to be really aware of is that DNR has got in, I can't think of which county it was, in western Minnesota, they have five hundred pieces or parcels of water that they want to put on the public waters deal. And they go that if we don't stop it now, I think Renville County was the one, yeah, because it was Bob Fox and Randy Kramer came on. And, and they filed a law, they actually took a lawsuit against the DNR to do this because they have a drainage deal going on where they want to make this a public waters deal. And then they said that once they dug into it, they found out that there's five hundred different bodies of water that they want to make, put on a public waters deal. And if we don't stop them now, so there was a, through environment and natural resource, that was one of the things that came out yesterday that, you know, they're going to establish, if it goes through AMC, we're going to establish a, a committee of commissioners from across the state to make sure that we get on this and get it halted before they get it. Because you know what the DNR does as far as when they get power. So that was one of, there was a couple of issues. We had few issues that became policy issues that weren't there. That was one of, there was a couple of issues. We had few issues that became policy issues that weren't there, but this was the main one that they were after. That was the number one. Thing it was, actually, there was twenty-five commissioners on, and the vote was twenty-five to zero to go ahead with this, so.
That Rum River still going over there?
Yep, we haven't had a meeting. I think we got one coming up. Um, uh, I don't know, I think on the, after Thanksgiving maybe. Um, we're, they're still arguing between the joint equities and the joint collaborative, and I see we got an email from uh Jerry Machi yesterday that, um, the way it stands now, and you know, you, it's really divided between who wants the J P E and who wants the J P C. And, you know, the large, the large, you know, watersheds or lake associations, they want the J P E because they can make the decisions without, you know, some, some of the, you know, that board could make the decisions without representation really, so. If, if we go to the J P E, then it has to be, you know, um, we will have a seat on that board probably. And you will get to make the same. You go to the J P C and then they can, or the J P C will have a seat. The J P E, we will not have a seat. It'll be, it'll appointed.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, I don't know where it's going. And that was all that I had.
I had a couple of meetings, uh, most of them was with Commissioner Burkey, so I'll let him talk about some of them. The other one was a four to four and a half hour meeting yesterday on uh policy platforms through the H H S and uh public safety, just going over everything that we wanna present to legislators. That's all I have, sir.
I should've gone first.
You should. I'll help you out.
Alright, um. I, it, South Minnesota Council on Aging meeting was my last meeting there, and uh they mostly went over a lot of ketchup stuff. It wasn't anything earth-shaking, but I think the big takeaway there was that number of meals that they're providing now has increased tremendously, and uh I got some numbers here on uh what they were last year, just, just in Benton County. Last year, we served at, through September, we had thirteen thousand six hundred meals. This year, we've had twenty thousand. So, that's that many more people because of COVID are there uh getting meals through most uh care, Catholic charities or any of those agencies, but mostly Catholic charities here. And we are, uh, so the client, number of clients that have actually using it have gone up seven percent, but the number of meals have gone up forty-seven percent. So, that's quite an increase, and overall, all the counties in this fourteen-county uh joint powers or the uh Council on Aging area, all the counties had a twenty-seven, averages twenty-seven percent increase, so. Uh, I don't, you know, there seemed like there, every time you turn around, there's some kind of a food program on some place for somebody, so uh. And then they did some of their shifting for, over uh rate increases on the meals because of the COVID restrictions, they have to increase the prices per meal too, so. That was the big takeaway there, and they aren't gonna, they have a meeting, we used to have a meeting in January right away, but they delayed the meeting until February so counties could have a chance to appoint their new members. Okay? And yesterday I had a general government policy committee meeting of Association of Minnesota Counties, and we had most of our business already done at the, the last meeting that we had, so we just did this little language cleanup stuff. It wasn't anything any different. That was the easy part. The uh, we did have two speakers. We had Roger Chamberlain, who was the Senate Tax Chair, and Paul Markward, who was the House Tax Chair. And they each talked for twenty minutes, a half an hour. And it, the picture on the revenue forecast is looking a little better. In the last report there was, it was ten percent better than what it was supposed to be. And it could, of course, depending on the vaccine availability, it could be less in a December forecast, and when they have to worry about it, it's February, so. But his takeaway was, in, in the Senate side anyway, do not ask for a tax increase. And uh, he made no commitment. Uh, we didn't hear anything about county program aid from him, and we didn't hear from the other chair either. So, you know what, you can kinda see what that, where that's going. And uh, they just reiterated that we are a high-tax state, and our tax per capita is very high. And he says, this year also, Senator Chamberlain says, the number of bills is gonna be really limited because of COVID and all the virtual meetings. So, you don't have a bill that you know that you really need or has to get passed, or has got a chance of passing, those are the only ones that's gonna allow it even be introduced, so. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Probably a good thing, we don't have so many bills. I guess one, one's uh state rep had like three hundred and some bills last session, so. That's just, that's just crazy. And then the uh House Chair, Paul Markward, uh, said they, he, he doesn't wanna increase pressure on property tax. That's his opinion, so I think he's from western Minnesota, and uh, he says, but everything's on the table. So, and one, of course, is reserves, and he, another one is shifts. He brought up a good point there. You don't like to use shifts too much, but if you have to use them, the school districts evidently go like ninety percent of their money in the first year of the biennium, and the second year, they get to ten percent. We said if you just put that down to eighty percent the first year, that saves a whole bunch of money. And you might wanna do that because with COVID possibly ending, you know, you're pushing, you're just pushing it out, and you could uh, you know, you make it up then, so if, if, that would be a place, it's made sense to me that that might be a place to go. And he also mentioned cuts, and uh maybe some revenue increases, but not to do any, but not on the property tax side, so. That was, that was a kind of interesting perspective, so you can see the House and the Senate lining up, and there's not gonna be much, much going on there, so, on the tax side of it. And there was an election update, much, much like Nadine had from uh this, I think it was a, uh, one of the, one of the committees for Association of Minnesota Counties that uh audited officials and election people. And I mentioned the mix-up in the primary, and uh if they were getting ballots for the general also. And that, there will be no changes in the election process, cuz Mary Kiffmeyer is the Chair of that committee, so that will be on. And let's see, we had solid waste last night. Uh, what did we, Steve, you wanna?
You're, you're on a roll, sir.
Yeah, that's the problem.
You know, you've only got a couple more B's before you're.
Yeah, I know.
You're gone.
Anyway, we, we ended up kicking the can down the road on several items, if you really wanna know the truth. We didn't uh, uh, decide if we wanna have this amnesty days and move the site, because we're having some issues with Stock Rapids there, at the high school. Uh, we decided to look for alternative sites. Um, we didn't wanna, we, the consensus was not to have both on the Benton County Public Works because all the population is on that end. Uh, score grants, we kicked that down the road too, to make a policy change that'll be coming up in January for a policy change to see how to handle a, a request that was made. And uh, Tim Oswald from Tri-County was there, and he provided some information on the state award grant to process food waste. Do you wanna say anything about that? How that was?
Keep going. That was very, actually, that was very interesting.
Yes.
About that grant process, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think it was, for two years, of how they're bringing in some equipment to uh process all of this stuff and turn it into fuel, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Shipping it down to, I forgot where it goes to.
Oh, the wa- uh wastewater treatment?
Wastewater, there we go. Yeah, because they're all set up to use all of that.
Mm-hmm.
That was pretty interesting, actually.
Yeah, it was, so that, that's something new on the take, uh, on the horizon there anyway, so you'll be hearing about that in the next, next several years. And I, I think Commissioner Heinere brought us something about plastic recycling in a county park, and we decided that that's an issue that should probably be taken up by the park board, cuz we have no recycling of any kind at the, at that county park up there, so we should do something up there, you know, don't want cans and plastic floating around the park, so.
It, it's pretty ironic of how we're always talking about food waste, you know, and recovering all of that, and we don't even talk about plastic and everything.
Yeah, right, right, right.
You know, I, it's just, you know, it's gonna be a regional park. I mean, we gotta start looking ahead and say, let, let's just go with this. We have to go with this.
Yeah. And, Monty, can you help me out a little bit on this? Like, eh, this is, we had a criminal justice meeting, and uh, I forget the numbers on what the jail population, I believe it was thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yep.
Right, and what, four or seven females?
I think it was four, yeah.
Yeah, four, and then we had, let's see, sentenced to serve?
Two.
Two, yeah.
Two people?
Well, I take that back.
Four?
There was, there was a few, what they call humor. I don't know if they're actually working S T S.
That's work, yeah, the work release.
It has been very small though, if any, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Is there, I, I did miss that meeting, cuz I had a, a meeting to go to that morning to, are we one of the few counties that still have that?
Yes, yes, yes. I, I think we are the ones, they, they changed some of the rules in courts and it, it's.
Still have S T S?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure. I, I think it varies in county to county. Some, it's a totally county-funded, county-run operation, some have none. It, it might be good at some point to do a survey and kinda get a sense of what's the prevailing practices out there.
Yeah.
A few years ago, there was a big wave that went through S T S, and some counties got rid of their crews, some kept them, we did. And um, we still contract with the state for that service, so.
Right, cuz I, I, I do know, you know, I don't know if that's still true or not, but a lot of other counties send people over here for that program?
Well, the only, the only are on a crew if they're actually in our jail.
Just in our jail.
Right, so, see, right now, of course, one of the limitations is the, the population is so low, and they're all just Benton County residents, or Benton County, they've committed a crime in Benton County, excuse me, you know.
And then you talked about the Rule Twenty-five assessments, and you remember what was said about that? They just, just no longer have a say about the treatment provider or something in that, and?
I recall that, so, you know, and I, Sandy was invited to sh- to appear here today, obviously she wasn't, uh, that's what I recall from that discussion, is that it's remove the county from the decision-making process to, as to when and where and how much uh, a person would receive uh services, so that um, although if I remember what Sandy said, though, that the county isn't the payer though, of those services.
And, and then, she also gave a presentation on a homeless issue that we have here in Benton County, and that's gonna be a big thing coming up for nu- new commissioners coming on, because that's not gonna go away. Once they stay here for thirty days, I understand it, they are.
I recall correctly, she said if they sleep here one night, they become.
Yeah, but if, if they become permanent.
One night? No, I think thirty days, right?
Yeah.
I thought it was thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, cuz if they're staying at Michael's, and I think that's gonna take some kind of a rezoning, a temporary rezoning, to keep that facility open for people through the winter, as I understand it, you know, it's a warm, we call it a warming house or something.
Right.
And it's gonna need some rezoning, so I don't know how that's gonna come through in, in Saint Cloud City Council. But uh, and there's another spot over on Lincoln Avenue or something, I think she said, wasn't it, Monty?
She said it's near W G O, and I can't picture what building it is, but that's where she said it was near.
Yeah, so, I, yeah, anyway, that, anyways, Sandy's gonna have to bring people up to date on this homeless issue. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty, it's getting to be a pretty big deal, especially when we started providing some vouchers through Tri-Cap, and uh, all of a sudden, everybody jumped on board, wanted to come here, and we had a waiting list of a hundred and fifty or something, and we didn't have vouchers for all of them, so. Hmm, yeah, we'll have to, that's, that's gonna be, and I don't have the answers to it, so.
Mr. Chair, I missed one meeting, and I kinda saved this for the last anyway.
Okay, good.
I uh, I went to R S V P via Zoom, of course, how you love Zoom, and they actually uh have gotten uh more new volunteers this last one than they've ever had.
Wow.
And, Mr. Chair, they're looking for a chair and a vice chair next year, so, you know, if you find some free time available after January, you're more than welcome to join.
I already, I already told the Council on Aging, they have an opening on their advisory committee for Benton County. That would be probably interesting.
Here's another opening for you, sir. That's all.
Okay, anybody else got anything? If not, that does it. Any uh commissioner concerns? I, I, I just had a question for Monty.
Yeah.
When are we gonna do the uh labor negotiation thing and?
Sure. I, I think you're referring to uh this, discussions about implementation of the classing costs.
Right.
Uh, well, um, uh, one part will be is, is when we're, when we're prepared to give you quality information. Uh, I believe I should be ready to give you information on implementation costs, uh, the new pay grades and so on. It would be at your second meeting in December. I, I should be ready by then uh to discuss those with you in closed session. Of course, you wanna have your labor attorney here uh for that, and also most likely Tessa Melvin, our consultant. So, that would probably be the earliest. I, I wasn't expecting to ask you to have a closed session at that night meeting, December first.
Okay.
So, this, be December fifteenth then. Um, so again, we, we should have information shared with you by then. I can't, at this point, though, again, I can't confirm Frank Mann's availability for the fifteenth. We'll have to check with his schedule. Originally, we were gonna have him here today, but it just turned out I did not have the information in time to give you estimates on implementation cost.
Okay, yeah, cuz again, the new, the new board coming on is gonna have to be caught up to date on that too.
Of course, yeah, that's a big subject.
That's gonna be.
So, I guess one thing you might wanna think about today is, is are you all comfortable with us going in scheduling a closed session on December fifteenth with Frank and with Tessa to discuss implementation? If you are, we'll certainly do that. You bet.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yep, you know, certainly that, that keeps the process moving, keeps it moving and, and, and makes it where we're not delaying it, you know. Possible invitation out there, out there farther. Okay.
With a follow-up on that, Monty, in this closed session, uh, are the newly-elected available to come to that or not?
Um, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I believe the answer is yes. Uh, I think you can, as a county board, you can have whoever you wish to in a closed session. It's your closed session. Uh, I'm gonna confirm that with Michelle Meyer and Frank, just to make sure there aren't any close, open, mean law issues.
Okay.
But again, I think it's up to you to decide who you invite to a closed session.
Okay.
Uh, you, there would be no private data, like medical data, stuff like that discussed, so I think my initial reaction is it should be fine, but I will confirm that though, so. Yep.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other business to come before the board? Oh, we got, we gotta set committees the whole first, yep.
Mr. Chair, I just have, I just have one to add. It's the A M C Virtual Annual Meeting. That's December seventh from one to four. It's gonna be uh by your favorite platform, Zoom. Uh, I hope you've seen the agenda. So, one to four, December seventh. Uh, they ask for us to register you, so perhaps you could, I could just go down the line here, who's gonna, okay? Is everyone gonna, gonna participate? Okay, then we'll just, we'll make sure we register everybody.
Yep.
Okay, and I think what happens is when we register you, then you'll get a link to Zoom meeting, so questions? Do you wanna be able to uh participate and observe the meeting from here, or do you wanna just do that individually?
I wanna do it individually.
Yep, I wanna do it individually too.
Okay, okay, that's great. I know I saw some stuff in A M C that said if you wanted to vote, you have to be logged into your own computer. So, they must be doing some kind of like a Zoom poll.
We did that yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We did the same thing yesterday too.
Because they give you a slot timeframe to vote.
Yeah, okay. So, that's all I have, is December seventh, one to four, A M C Virtual Annual Meeting. We'll get you registered. That's it. So maybe you could do a motion on those.
Motion to approve the cause, Mister Chair.
I'll second it.
Yeah, anything else? All in favor, so say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Carry and that, that, we get the whole meeting set. Anything else, anyone? Okay.
Motion to adjourn, Mister Chair.
Okay, motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, so say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion is carried. We are adjourned and, uh.
Take a recess for.
Yeah, we'll take a brief recess, and then we're gonna start the ditch authority meeting, that'll, which shouldn't take too long, so. But it's good for the new ones to sit here and kinda get caught up on that too. That'll be another issue coming up. It's authority, so. You want one?
Morning, sir.
Morning, how are you?
Good, good, and you?
Not too bad. I got congratulations first.
You're like a DJ and mixing and.
Yeah. So I just thought, another good reason.
Do you have the paper shuffle?
Well, let's just say we wanna keep, so here's my, maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, so, okay. So, right now, the only way I can, I can kill individual mics, right? But I just say I wanna kill them all, I gotta hit the power button. If I do that, that's gonna shut livestream on, right?
I don't think it will kill, it will kill the livestream audio.
But you don't think it's gonna kill livestream itself if I shut the topic? The mic power off, the system is gonna get ready.
I think this powers off the systems up there with, but I don't think, that's a good option anyway.
So I was thinking, it's like, let's take a break, and I wanna just shut off the mic so I don't get it actually kill livestream. But if I keep going, then just bring the mic so back. So what I did is, I, I.
Yeah, it's on our list, I sent you.
And I think you took care, so is that setting for the stick?
It depends, someone may use it and the speakers are the back TV, do the training, so it can switch. Yeah, yeah, just depends. No one uses this PC and sticks.
I'm glad, because she was coming really. I know, um. So after today, only two more of these. So, but that was something, I think, with her mic and her computer, because Amanda was coming in just fine.
Yeah.
So she quit, just called into the conference, and that was fine. You know, that was a good test of you. Really well.
You do, okay, good, good.
Really well.
You didn't, and you didn't have to use this?
No, she called into the conference. I gave it, I should call here, but she's calling.
And it, and it's better for the YouTube and everything else, cause then all the audio shoots through.
You know, I think this, by the day, you guys heard of this?
Okay.
It's still, I mean, it's not hurting.
So, yeah, definitely.
You know, I just, I can, I, I can hear just fine. So, you know, it, I don't really.
We left, we left it there just in case, so.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that'll hurt me. Then I suppose we should, we should do the.
I am pretty sure that that button does not control the power to this device or that device.
I think. Why, okay, what I'm doing, we're done here, ditching.
And then you just, yeah, watch your, watch your coaching meeting.
The recording's kind of above your head.
Yeah.
If that goes off, then. Some issues going on with the dating, the date. It was showing like eighty-four six dates.
After every meeting, you need to. That goes in every meeting.
Yeah, maybe she's.
Maybe, it, I think the live stream will look at it, Chris will look at it. Every time, every live stream, there's a main setting in there that we can probably take the date out of and just leave it.
Generally, and then. Live stream, you don't cut your date. You just wanna go and add that date once it's our.
That's right. Yeah, she might've changed the wrong area. That's no big deal, we can run that.
It might be something we should ask Vicki to do, because Vicki does.
Sure. Yeah, I think Chris gave him both directions on how to do it.
This, this big ditch deal, we're gonna have to do something about that ditch.
Hey, Chris. Are you ready to talk ditches?
Yeah. I could talk to you more about ditches. So.
Is that normal? That's not normal, is it?
No, it's not. But it may be more normal for, Jake, how come they never, how come they never sloped them ditches back on the, from St. Pat's to.
Yeah, we.
How come they never did?
They don't listen to us, I guess, I don't know.
I thought they were, especially, you know, I know the one side is, doesn't your brother want the one side part of it? I can see that's kinda wetlands, but on the north side, I don't know why they didn't slope them back.
Yeah, we should ask them about that. I know. Yeah, I know, it's like, oh, boy.
There's just a lot of room for error there.
Yeah.
Is that the fastest turnaround you've had since you've been here?
Well, it's the most. I've always, I've had.
One year, is it, Maker had all five one year. Maker had all five one year.
Hey, Maker's got four this year. And a new administrator, because they fired the other.
Oh, no.
Who does? Maker.
Four new ones this year?
Well, from what I hear, he's, uh, Schmidt, what's his name? Uh, he got elected two years ago. I think they got some new board, two new board members in there, and they had two that were disgrunted with him. And they pretty much forced him out. No, he, he applied, okay, he applied at a couple different counties.
Say, we're gonna. We're gonna, I'm gonna call the, uh, meeting of the Benton County Ditch Authority to order. And, uh, first item we have is to approve or amend the agenda. You got anything else, Chris?
I have no additions. Motion to approve the agenda, Mister Chair.
Second, Mister Chair.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda's adopted. We had the minutes from the last meeting on November third for the wishes. Board approve, or any additions or leasings or anything in the minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, redetermination of benefits in all county ditches. Wow, we got something figured out, Chris?
I, haha, to make it long story short, no, I don't. And I, I don't know, maybe, I just, I think it's worth discussing. You know, we were talking about having a public hearing, um, before ordering a redetermination of benefits. And with everything that's going on, with numbers increasing and, and new restrictions being placed on us every day, is it still a desire? Well, first, I wanna ask the board, is it still a desire to move forward with this process? The, the reason why we started this was because we might capitalize on some cost savings of, uh, something that we may end up doing in the future regardless. Um, and so that's why, you know, I was kinda bringing it forward and, and maybe pushing at one point to do a redetermination of benefits on multiple ditches. Cause as we, as we work through the ones that we've already got in the pipeline in process, I just foresee, you know, there's gonna be another ditch right behind it. And if we get this redetermination out of the way, that would make our, just expedite a process in the future. But is that still a desire of having a public hearing at this time with everything that's going on?
Mister Chair? On, it wouldn't slow down the process of the ditches we already have, where we have, you know, uh, requests for cleaning and that?
No, because we've already ordered the redetermination and appointed viewers on County Ditch Six and County Ditch fourteen. And we have the repair petition on Ditch Three and Ditch fourteen, so that's kinda already, or Three and, what did I say? Yeah, Ditch Nine. Um, that's already started. So what this process was gonna do was kinda initiate on those other ditches where, that haven't even come up in discussions yet.
And I, I think, I think the process is great. I think it needs to be done. But in the last week to ten days, I really don't know if the process, if we can go through with the process right now. I don't, that would be my theory. I mean, I don't know how many people will have show, maybe not, maybe not very many. But we could have a huge amount of people show up, and that's not something we probably need to do. I mean, I, I, it's still on here, is that the Highway Department, and you told us last time you weren't real keen on that idea?
Yeah, we, we've had a, well, I'll go with it. We've had a positive case within the department. They've, they were already off work. We were fortunate, they were already off work hunting anyways when they, uh, contracted it. But so we've had a positive case in the department. I mean, that was a concern from staff, is that we're bringing, um, a bunch of public that wouldn't normally be in the building there. And, and you're right, we don't know. We were, we were kinda gearing up that we might have the potential for a large group, but, uh, maybe not. I mean, we've, we've had hearings both ways.
Are we sure we need a public hearing to start this process? Are, are we convinced of that?
Uh, I'm not a legal interpreter.
Michelle is with us, uh, by go-to.
So why, why would we need a public hearing to do something that we're required by law to do? Obligated to do. I just don't get that logic.
Well, Commissioner Mont, I think we're gonna, we're obligated to have the public hearing because we're gonna assess their taxes.
Well, not that, well, the initial process is not assessing, assessing taxes.
Yeah, we've got Michelle lying here. She can maybe give us an answer to that.
Yeah, aye. Um, the reason that we do that is because we need to provide notice because anyone who is already benefited by the ditch will be incurring costs through this process. And they have the right to appear and contest whether or not a redetermination needs to be, um, done. I did consult with Kathleen Heaney, who is Sugar County too, um, when we had previously decided this, or I believe it was Ditch Three. And, um, excuse me, it was fourteen or six, but they did go through the public hearing process. And I have tried to reach out to John Cole, but I haven't found successful with speaking with him. Um, but that is the prevailing thought, is that we are asking people to incur costs as a part of this process. And they have right to have notice and be heard.
So we could have people write in their objections or something, have it not, have a, the governor says we can't have a public hearing. And our attorneys tell us we have to have a public hearing, so.
Two different things, we have to have a public hearing, it's just how you do it and when you do it. Um, so, you know, whether or not you can actually hold illegally during a pandemic, that's a whole different item. Um, if we have to put this off because of restrictions, or if we have to do it via Zoom. Um, from what I'm hearing, you don't love Zoom meetings, but those are kind of the options.
Mister Chair, is, is there any option, Michelle, that we can move forward with this and have the public hearing after we award the contract?
Well, you can't really start incurring costs until.
Tell you, yeah.
I will add, you know, any public hearing that I've been a part of, uh, written testimony's always been welcomed, and, and we've read those into the record. I mean, that was, that's the case here. I, I try to think back to some of the recent public hearings that we had regarding ditches, and we had a good turnout. We had something, uh, it was like Ditch fourteen, for example. We had that engineer's report that was, that was published at that time too. At this point, I don't have anything to, to publish, cause I don't have anything but maybe the original viewer's report from when these ditches were established. And maybe, maybe because there's nothing talked about, there wouldn't be a large turnout. I guess I'm just not confident in that either, so.
Well, I guess I could agree with Mister Pop, we can't have a public people showing up. We could just say that we're gonna have Zoom, we're writing, and that's the only two choices, and move forward.
And, and phone call, correct.
And phone call.
And phone call. I, I believe we still have to keep moving forward with this. I really do.
Yeah.
This has been delayed for so, so long, ten, twenty, thirty years on some of these ditches. But it is our obligation and or ninety years, whatever the case may be. But, but it is also our obligation to do this every ten years. And I just soon get it all done with.
I guess I would, I think we should move forward, whichever capacity we can.
I do too, Mister Chair, but some way, somehow we gotta find a way to do it, Chris. If, you know, if.
Sure.
During this pandemic, we gotta do it, uh, we, we don't want these to, who knows what, what'll happen, maybe another five years, we won't. We'll get them done, you know, they gotta get done.
Yeah, and you know, it might not let us do it in a.
That's a good point.
So I, yeah, I agree, there's, I think there's some benefit. So we do have a public hearing set. It had the, um, Highway Department listed as the location. Uh, if we wanna, I think, we could still have it that day. We, I don't know if we wanna change the location back to here at the board meeting, where we have the equipment to do the online stuff. Um, and then I could put that information in the mailings that we.
Only, only written and Zoom, only two choices.
And, and phone call.
And phone call, yeah.
Yep.
I can work with Monty on what that meeting information's gonna be, make sure that gets in the letters. And once again, we, we can send out mailings, uh, of property owners based on those, the last viewer's report, which could be a hundred years old. We'll have to update the owner information. Um, we won't be able to capture everybody that may potentially be in that because that's, that's what the viewers would do. The viewers will tell us who all benefits from that ditch, so we'll do our best to notify everybody that we know of today.
So that'll be, uh, Mister Chair, that'll be one, two, three, four, five, six, eight of them then?
Correct. We pulled out, uh, working with Michelle, we pulled out Ditch Six, Ditch fourteen, or I mean, I mean, sorry. Uh, we pulled out Ditch Three and Ditch Nine, because we have repair petitions on them. Uh, ditch, I just looking at my, my notice here. Uh, Ditch Six and Ditch fourteen, we've already appointed the viewers for that and ordered that, so it'd be, yeah.
Four, five, seven, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Yep. All right.
Okay, what?
I'd make a motion to have that meeting.
And what's the date on that?
What was the date, Chris?
We, if we wanna keep the same date, it was November twenty-fourth, which is next, next Tuesday.
Is that enough?
That's gonna be enough time? No way.
Requirement for mail notice, Chris?
I'm sorry, state that question again?
I, I believe there's a ten-day requirement for mail notice.
Oh, they need to receive it ten days, okay. Then I guess we were forced to push it back.
Would I also ask you, is there also a requirement to publish the notice of public hearing? In a newspaper? That too requires ten days notice as well.
So, Ja- January what?
Well, I apologize for that. I guess we're, the next week at the earliest. But when, um.
Next week is, uh, would be.
That's Thanksgiving week, that's how it works.
Thirty-first would work for me.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is Wednesday. You, the week of December first?
But we have, uh, A M C Virtual Meetings that week, though?
What, what day you think, let's just start there?
Uh.
December seventh doesn't work.
Uh, would Monday, the thirtieth, work for anyone?
The thirtieth would work for me.
Is, is that enough time to get them letters out? I mean, to get all the, you know, evidently you said you gotta update.
Yeah, uh.
And the letters have to be out ten days prior to the meeting.
And the notice in the paper too.
So we'd have to get mail letters out like tomorrow, so.
Pretty short timeline.
And Chris, Chris also.
Too, you've gotta consider, uh, publication timeframes for the newspapers. Most likely, your, your advertisement of public hearing would not occur. Most likely, your, your advertisement of public hearing would not occur until next week.
Correct.
So that's gonna push, again, it's gotta appear, appear ten days prior, so you're probably.
It's gonna be in December.
I would say you're looking at the earliest week of December seventh. Right.
Well, it's, we, since.
What's the timeframe would we be looking at? To hold this meeting? Evening, morning?
Could you make it part of the?
We got AMC in the afternoon, looks like.
On the seventh, yeah.
Monday, the seventh is out for me.
Yeah, yeah, we all, we're all up with that. Yeah, we all meet.
And the tenth and the eleventh. Oh, no, the eleventh, I'm good. But the tenth is out. I've got.
Yep.
We have Mike on the ninth.
Well, about eighth, eighth or ninth.
I've gone that week.
Huh?
I've gone that week.
Oh, okay. Can we make it part of the county board being on the fifteenth?
Yes, right, that'd be our final meeting of the year.
Um. We got a special session that day too.
Yeah.
Close session on the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, we already got a close session.
Um, I'm probably gonna be gone on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Or the rest of that week.
Wow.
Uh-oh, meaning the week of Christmas then.
Why not? No, no.
Do we push it on to the, the new folks?
January.
Yeah, I think so. You can take any date you want, January.
Um, okay. Well, if that's realistically what we're looking at, do we just not set a public hearing today and then we, I bring this back to the, the new board in January and once we look at.
I don't, yeah. I think, well, it looks.
Well, I think the answer is it's either you can set it today for December or you're gonna have to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What?
If it's gonna be in January, then you're just gonna have to wait.
If, if you don't get it done by the eighteenth, then it's pretty much.
Yeah.
December first, we had a late, late meeting that day.
So we have an evening meeting for TNT.
Right, we could have it first.
Like earlier in the?
Four to, four to six or something.
Could you get it done by the first, Chris?
I, I think we could get our mailings out by the first, yeah.
I don't know. Three weeks.
You know, I'm, I'm still concerned about ten day notice, notification, so, so I, 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 I should, thinking about the publication dates for Benton County News and South Carolina Herald.
Yeah, twenty-fourth. Yeah, we, Mr. Jacob was here, we could talk Sunday.
Well, 'cause, yeah, the paper comes out.
I think.
We could get the notice into the paper this week, but it would show up in next.
Next week, right. So I think you should focus on dates of December seventh and afterward.
So the seventh was out though.
Yep.
That whole week, you have gone that week.
That, that whole week is out.
That week is out.
Well, the fourteenth, we already have a cow for fee schedule revisions, it looks like.
Yeah.
There'd be, can be the whole on the fourteenth, that's right.
We could do it there in the afternoon or something.
Like that afternoon?
That's a nine o'clock call we have, so.
Right.
How long will that call take?
I would say it's, it's like official salaries, fees, uh, up, probably an hour, hour and a half.
Then why don't we do it at ten thirty then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten thirty on the fourteenth?
On the fourteenth.
Okay.
Did I hear you say you're gone though? That week?
Well, starting the fifteenth.
Oh, excuse me.
I will be here fourteen.
That'd be in the good center.
So the fourteenth, I think, could work, right? So we'll start at nine, be done ten, ten thirty, so do ten thirty.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So we'll publish it for ten thirty, yeah. We can always start afterwards. We just wouldn't be able to start before.
Before ten thirty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And Chris, we'll just use the same go-to meeting as we use for county board.
Okay, the same code, meeting code.
You've got that, just use that.
Okay, that's what I will put in the, the, the notice for the paper and in the letters.
And just make sure you include the phone number and the code.
Sure.
Get in, um, yeah.
Okay.
If we don't start this now, think about the process. If we don't start it till next May or June, termination, it won't, nothing will get done next year. It'll be twenty twenty-two for getting done.
Exactly.
So Chris, you take care of the published notices too?
I will, yep, I will get those in the newspaper, yep.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
I think so, yes, we would. The motion set the public hearing.
On the?
At ten thirty.
On the fourteenth of December.
We have, we have a second, have you?
I'll second that, yes.
Is that okay, Michelle, with you?
She left.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
You're gonna be there, right?
I will be.
All right.
Good, thank.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion is carried and the public hearing is set.
All right, I will get a revised, uh, notice, 'cause what was in the packet obviously was the wrong date and stuff for the board chair to sign that's next available.
Okay.
Time, so.
When do you want me to sign that then?
Uh, I don't know, when, next time you're in the, in Foley.
You could change the date in about ten minutes, probably.
I could, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
All right, we'll do that.
Could do that for you all and just send it to Chris or Monty and then have it printed off right now, 'cause I believe I've got that notice.
Okay, yeah, if you would, Michelle, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
We'll use technology to our advantage, so.
Right.
What's it gonna cost us?
Very good. All right. That's all I had for the ditch authority.
Oh, okay. Any, anything else? I guess so. We, let's see, do we get a motion or are we adjourned here?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both, great. Thank you.
Big deal for something today.
Oh, boy, homework time.
Tiny pile?
Yeah, she is. She's driving Alexandria some days too. Okay, Steve, so I did my test, I powered off and it.